If you may stand, then salute the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I will be calling the roll for the holdover members. Mrs. Cozer. Mr. Merle Dean Music?
Here.
Mr. Rucko?
Here.
At this time, I call for the temporary president poll from the holdover board members.
Merle Dean Music.
Is there any other nominations? One wants, one place. Oliver Ting.
We are fine with him as temporary president.
At this time, certificates of election were by Mrs. Berhowski for Mr. Tom Gockel, Mr. Merle L. Music, Mr. John Patraca, Mr. Bradley Toman, and Mr. John Urban and Dr. Rhonda Locklin.
Okay, the first set is going to be the four-year seats. We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, Westmoreland County, hereby certified that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 7th day of November 2023, it said county is, it appears that Mr. Tom Gockel, Mr. Merle L. Music, Mr. John Patraca, Mr. Bradley Toman, and Mr. John Urban elected school director at large for a four-year term with the Greater Detroit School District within the Westmoreland County. Within Westmoreland County. The second one is for the two seat. And that is we, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, Westmoreland County, hereby certified that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 7th day of November 2023, it is said it appears that Rhonda Locklin was duly elected for this office of school board director with the Greater Detroit School District for a two-year term.
Menickels Solicitor and Minister of Office, Phil Convent, and newly elected board members.
Would the members who are going to take the oath join me by the flag? Mark, are you all prepared to take the oath, Rucko? Would you rejoice your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemn swear
I do solemn swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that I will discharge the duties of my office with the death of the Constitution.
At this time, I will list off the current membership of the 2024 School Board Directors. Mr. Tom Gockel, Mrs. Heidi Cozer, Dr. Rhonda Locklin, Mr. Merle Dean Music, Mr. Merle L. Music, John Patraca, Andrew Rucko, Bradley Toman, and John Urban. The next item on the agenda is election of the office and the nomination and the election of the school board president.
I nominate Rhonda Locklin.
I nominate Merle Dean Music.
Any further nominations? Again, any further nominations? Any further nominations? The nominations are closed and ballots cast by, or call votes as follows.
Okay. Heidi Cozer?
Rhonda Locklin.
Mr. Gockel?
We can't have any discussion.
Usually there's not a discussion. It's just the, we've had that in the past when we were tied after a number of ballots. But we're there.
Mr. Gockel?
Merle Dean Music.
Dr. Locklin?
Myself.
Mr. Merle Dean Music?
Myself.
Mr. Merle L. Music?
Merle Dean Music.
Mr. Patraca?
Merle Dean Music.
Mr. Rucko?
Merle Dean Music.
Mr. Toman?
Rhonda Locklin.
Mr. Urban?
Merle Dean Music.
Merle Dean Music.
Thank you to the board members of the board and Tom Toman. I'm sorry.
The next item on the agenda is nomination and election of school. Excuse me. Nomination and election of school board vice president. At this time, I have been for nominations. Any other nominations?
A nomination, Rhonda Locklin.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? The nomination is closed. At this time, I call for ballots being cast by the following board members.
Mr. Gockel?
Andrew Rucko.
Mrs. Cozer?
Rhonda Locklin.
Mr. Rucko? Mrs. Locklin? Mr. Merle Dean Music?
Mr. Rucko.
Mr. Merle L. Music?
Mr. Rucko.
Mr. Patraca?
Mr. Rucko.
Mr. Rucko?
Merle.
Mr. Toman?
Dr. Rucko.
And Mr. Urban?
Mr. Rucko.
Mrs. Rucko's? And Mr. Toman. Sixth.
Okay. For resolution one, selection of the solicitor. This will be a roll call or this will also be a roll call vote. Mrs. Berhowski? Okay. I move for a motion and a second for resolution number one.
Sir.
Any discussion? This item will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Berhowski?
Mr. Gockel?
Say, Mr. May.
Yes, Mr. May. Mrs. Cozer?
Yes.
Dr. Locklin?
Yes.
Mr. Merle Dean Music?
Yes.
Mr. Merle L. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Patraca?
Yes.
Mr. Rucko?
Yes.
Mr. Toman?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I would like to thank the board for keeping faith from moving your solicitor now for state duty, liking from the date that this school district was formed. And we've always done our best to earn your trust and your respect. And we are truly humbled to get another chance and do another year of work and work with you. I'm very proud to be part of the board. Very proud to be part of this administrative team. And very proud to be on the team that does such good work for our students and for our young people in this district. It is a very special school district and I am honored to be part of it. Thank you.
The next graded resolution is resolution number two, designation of monthly meetings. Can I get a motion and make second?
Pro move.
Ready. Any discussion?
November 4th election day. Yes.
This, we moved to the last election day.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, we have one day. Yeah, I think that's what you have.
All those in favor of resolution number two say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? I move for resolution number three, adjournment of this meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. The motion passes.
Yeah, we're ready to go into a brief executive session prior to the committee of hold. And I'm very sorry, folks, we're going to have to ask you if you don't mind to just step out quickly. You shouldn't be.
To draw this meeting to order, at this time, we will salute the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Berhowski, would you do the roll?
Mr. Gockel? Mrs. Cozer?
Here.
Dr. Locklin?
Here.
Mr. Merle Dean Music?
Here.
Mr. Merle L. Music?
Here.
Mr. Patraca?
Here.
Mr. Rucko?
Here.
Mr. Toman?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
And we're all here.
At this time, Mr. Nichols will do the Solicitor's Report.
While we're doing the Solicitor's Report, I would like to announce that we have an executive session between the reorganization meeting and this meeting. In the executive session, there were three matters discussed for executive session. One was under personnel, a discipline issue. The second matter under personnel was a discussion regarding the need for an appointment for Parks and Rec Board. And third was a discussion of a special education matter. And on my Solicitor's Report, next week is going to be approval of the tax assessment appeal. The holdover board members are aware of this, but my associate, Ryan Priggs, handles all of our tax assessment appeals. He will come for executive session to report the matter out to the new board members. Actually, this is a matter that was settled already by the board and it just needs more approval. But he'll be in an executive session to explain it to you prior to the vote. And that's my whole report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next will be education and planning. Mrs. Cozer, will you take care of that?
Yes, thank you. We'll begin with the student report from Alexis and Maddie. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
In the Greater Detroit Secondary School regarding our academics, students in the integrated studies class continue working on their student selected projects aligned with their respective career goals. Using through creating a mini golf course on campus, rebuilding an engine and car, and creating and maintaining a health and wellness products closet for students. This week, the Winter Way Keystone exams have been happening. Today, December 5th, algebra will take place during the school day. And tomorrow, December 6th, biology will occur during the school day. And then on Thursday, December 7th, the exams for literature will occur and that also marks the day for the mid-quarter fourth quarter two. On Monday, December 11th, the Young Engineers Program Graduate Leaders Series will take place. This is an engineering-based course in partnership with Penn Memorial and Greater Detroit Secondary School. For our arts, one of ours is ready up for another season built on the success of last year's top state ranking and classification for multiple weeks. December 14th, the senior high school choir winter concert will take place. And on December 20th, the senior high school band winter concert will also take place, both happening at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. For our athletics, winter sports seasons begin or continue through late November or do so through the months ahead. Winter sports include ice hockey, cheerleading, boys and girls basketball, bowling, swimming, and wrestling. On Wednesday, April 18th, students have the opportunity to sit in on a career future readiness along the guest speaker Q and A panel during GL time. Student opportunities have been happening on Friday, December 1st, the Greater Detroit Senior High School Key Club, sponsored for all junior high school and high school staff, a holiday shopping, childcare coverage, and the high school CSC. Key Club members and their advisor, Mr. Snyder, provide children of staff games, pizza, and fun while staff on holiday shopping. And then on Sunday, December 3rd, the HOHO Hope Bender Craft Show supports the Greater Detroit School District Relay for Light Team, the Blackland Center, and the Junior High Food Drive from 12 to 4:00 PM in the high school CSC with Dr. Bobby Young Smith, staff, and volunteers facilitating the event. In the Greater Detroit Junior High School, the junior high band and chorus winter concert is actually happening right now, tonight, in the senior high auditorium. The food drive is in full force and will continue until December 14th. Students have chances to win a gift basket, play in the barrowball tournament, or join in the student holiday party with a bestowed evening at the food drive. And so far, over 1,850 items have been collected within two weeks of the month to go. And then December 15th, students have the opportunity to show their holiday spirit with an upbeat song.
Okay, the Guardian Elementary School is beginning with LES. On December 4th through the 7th is their holiday shopping for grades K through 6. December 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 is their holiday shopping, family night. Also, on December 6th, grades 5 and 6 will have their band and chorus assemblies. And then on December 7th, they will have their band and chorus concerts. December 11th through the 15th is LES's Holiday Carefree Spirit Week. And December 20th is grades K through 4, holiday music concert for family and friends. Moving to Mountain View, December 5th and 8 through the 8th is their holiday shopping for K through 6. On December 6th, 5 to 7:00 PM is Mountain View's Breakfast Dinner with Santa. December 13th, 5th and 6th grade holiday concert will begin at 7:00 PM. And on December 21st will be their sing-along in the gym followed by a holiday party. Moving finally to Bagley, today they celebrate their caring cats this morning during breakfast with Mr. Gramka. Tomorrow, December 6th, grades 5 and 6 will have their band concert. December 12th through the 15th is their Santa's workshop for grades K through 6. December 18th through the 21st will be their Holiday Spirit Week and it ends with their sing-along on the 21st. And finally, December 19th, Christmas cookies and holiday hearts will be presented by first grade. Are there any questions?
So Maddie, I just want to say to you, during caring cats this morning at Bagley, you always ask the kids, you know, well, first of all, Mrs. Stewart introduces the superintendent and then do we know what the superintendent does, right? Well, then we talk about five buildings, 3,500 kids, et cetera. And I said to them this morning, they were just blown away. Plus, we get to manage a budget in the school district. What do you think it takes for our district to manage five schools and 400 employees and 3,500 kids and buses and all that kind of stuff? And I had one hand that went right up and he looked at me and said, $1,000.
We bet.
And I said, it's a little more than that. The second hand up, one hand went up and said, $2,000. But it's always fun. You know, we do caring cats at LES. We do caring cats at Mountain View. And it's always great to be with the kids. But thank you for bringing that up.
Of course.
Thank you, ladies.
Mr. Mayes, will you have a roll? Well, they've attached me. It's a birthday time.
That's respectful, yes. The Roman date is attached. Yep, the Roman date is attached. If you have any questions, please call or email. Thank you.
Thank you. Next week, we will approve the affiliation agreement between Pennsylvania and Western Penn West University and Greater Detroit School District for the academic educational experiences in the area of speech-language pathology. And that also is attached on your agenda. We will also approve the IDEA B Section 611 agreement and the IDEA Section 619 pass-through funds. Pass-through funds use of funds agreement between Westmoreland Intermediate Unit and the Greater Detroit School District. I think it's very interesting. It's very, it's orthogonous. That's all I meant to say. We will also approve the Greater Detroit School District handle title on federal programs and teacher equity plan. We are going to approve St. Vincent College Research Development Survey Distribution by Zachary Green. We are going to approve overnight and state field trips and they are enlisted as senior high students coming to Central Dog and High School in Harrisburg, Daniel and Spalding, Hoover. At a cost of $250 per student. Thank you, Mrs. Cozer. The next item on the agenda is finance and Mr. Rucko, will you?
Yes, we will. Will the, ask you to approve the treasurer's report, their attachment, approve paying of the bills, approve Act 1 Resolution on the raised taxes involved in index. You want to address that then or next time?
It's just, I can address it tonight and next week if needed. So the state sets an index level over a year. They set it by September 30th. This year, we have until January 4th to adopt that resolution. If we do not adopt the resolution, we have until January 24th to adopt a preliminary budget. The only reason you would want to adopt the preliminary budget is if you can't operate within that index. So my recommendation would be to adopt the resolution.
All right, and we'll also, the finance committee gaining for cash. Let's move forward, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rucko. The next finance committee meeting will be Tuesday, January 9th to 24th. At 5:30 at the senior high school library classroom. The next item on the agenda will be facilities, operations, and plan. Mr. Music, will you take care of that?
Thank you, Mr. Music. Here's an agenda item for permission and ties for general school supplies and arts signs. Paper to study old electrical medical supplies, fall, winter, and spring school equipment and appliance supplies for the 2014 college school year. I'd also like to take this time and ask the Solicitor to approve a regulation for next week's meeting to rescind the votes that took place in September, October concerning the master's facilities plan and specifically Resolution 61 being amended. And the last one, please, facilities operations and planning committee meeting will be, next one will be Thursday, December 7th.
No, it's been canceled.
I mean, it's really one. And that has been canceled.
Thank you, Mr. Music. The next item on the agenda is student activities and recreation. And the next student activities and recreation committee meeting is to be determined. For moving on to community relations, we will move to approve nominations of Greater Detroit School District board member to serve on the Greater Detroit Parks and Recreation Commission as are represented to fill the current term remaining through December 3rd to 1st, 2025. The next item is approve appointment to the Greater Detroit Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term. The Greater Detroit Parks and Recreation Commission meeting minutes from October 19th are attached. And the next Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be Thursday, December 21st, 2023, at 4:30 at the Detroit Municipal Building. Moving on to the Westmoreland Intermediate Union, the WIU summer meeting minutes and executive directors' reports from November 16th, 2023 are as attached. The next WIU committee meeting will be Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Fred Rogers Room. Transportation, Mr. Music. EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Dr. Locklin, will you take that?
Yes, PM, next meeting, the reorganization meeting is tomorrow night at 5:45 at EWCTC.
May I? For new board members, there are invitations at your seat. You couldn't be officially invited to, you were sworn in tonight. But if you would like to attend that meeting tomorrow night, you're certainly welcome to attend.
And you don't get to our speaking.
I'm sorry, what's that?
No, you would not, because they'd be either 5:40 come and 5:45.
There, it's very important, I'm the solicitor over there too. It's very important that we get as many of you there as possible. There's a, there's two boards that operate over at the EWCTC. One is the Joint Operating Committee and one is the whole Joint Area Board, which is all of the board members from Lincoln Air Dairy and Detroit. And occasionally, in the past, we've struggled to get forum on the big board. So it's a wonderful night. The culinary crew over there puts on a beautiful candle at dinner. And for those of you that haven't been at EWCTC, it's a very, very festive evening. So I would encourage all of you, if you can.
It's an opportunity for you all to see, especially new board members who have never been to EWCTC, half of their budget is paid for by Greater Detroit because we send the ambassador to the attendees twice as many as they do. So therefore, our costs are superior. I think it's important as board members, because you'll be voting on this budget issue, so you can see what we do over there. We just finished a $600 cap improvement project to improve security, to improve some of the shops. We invested in HVAC. Pardon me?
Yeah, it's one of the things.
Yes.
Cosmetology.
Cosmetology. And it's just, I think it's just important, it's part of our school. And we attend as board members, we attend every month. And there are nine of us, which are three from each of the three sending schools. But this is the one time a year that all 27 of us attend. And it's just, it's just a really nice evening. I mean, it's murmur a lot of these schools too. We once had a president of manufacturing association for Pennsylvania who said that the average age for the manufacturing worker was 54 years old. It's not good luck. We need to really push kids into manufacturing because it's, you know, they don't have student loans at the end. So you don't do technicals and they get off. Their, their subsidies are often made for.